Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the School Committee meeting on this Tuesday, November 24, 2020. We just concluded an executive session as published in the agenda. This is a virtual meeting which is via Zoom and broadcast live on WCAT's Facebook page. I'd like to start the meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next is a reading of our mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Next on the agenda is the public comment. If anyone from the public would like to participate, I would ask that you identify yourself with your name and address now.
Hey Amy.
Yes Doug?
Yeah. I just wanted to let Judy know I think that there are some people in the waiting room.
Okay.
Yeah, they're just starting to join now Amy.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Welcome everyone. We're on the agenda for public comment. If anyone from the public would like to participate in our meeting, I would ask that you identify yourself with your name and address. Is there anyone from the public who would like to participate? I am seeing none. So I will move on. Thank you. Do we have a consent agenda Suzie?
Amy, there were a couple of people who were still trying to connect. So I don't know if you want to just ask one last time if there's anybody on for public comment? I could see a couple that were still kind of scrolling around trying to get their audio connected.
Okay, thank you. It's really tough with the Zoom. You can't see if people are trying to come in or not. So again, next is the public comment. If anyone from the public would like to participate, I would just ask that you unmute yourself and identify yourself with your name and address. Is there anyone from the public who would like to participate?
Okay, we're good.
Okay.
Thanks Amy. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
So I do have a motion for approval of minutes.
Thank you.
This is a long list everyone. So I moved that the school committee approved the minutes of the school committee and town council joint meeting of October 15, 2020, and the emergency school meeting of November 15, 2020, and accept the minutes of the school committee finance and facilities subcommittee meetings of the October 22, 2020, and October 29, 2020, and the minutes of the school committee policy and communications subcommittee meeting of October 22, and the school committee student services subcommittee meeting of November 6, 2020, as presented.
Second.
Second the motion.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Dr. Burns?
Yes, except for the October 15 meeting that I was not a part of.
Okay.
And Mr. Lee Akos?
Thank you.
Yeah, yes, same responses Darcys. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is under chair comments. I just want to make one brief comment about, you know, how most people know that we transitioned, the high school transitioned to a full remote schedule on November 16. And I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the parents and students and teachers for their understanding and continued support as we navigate through these trying times. So I just, it's greatly appreciated. And you know, obviously this is a very fluid situation, so we all do appreciate your understanding. And the last thing I have under chair comments is I have confirmed with Dorothy Presser for our school committee workshop, which will be Saturday, December 12, which will be via Zoom for all between around the hours of 9 to 12. So I appreciate you all getting back to me with that and looking forward to that workshop. So that is all I have under chair comments, so I can hand it off to Superintendent Lyons.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. And I have just a few announcements. So just some updates. So our student liaisons from the high school will be starting with us in our next school committee meeting, which is always great. It's, we always feel like it's a bonus. It's a plus for us to hear directly from students around what their experiences are like and how things are going from their perspective. I feel like it's really invaluable information. So we are looking forward to four new liaisons joining us. We might see some veterans in the group. I think some that have been here with us in the past. So we look forward to welcoming them. I also want to let the committee know and let the community know that tomorrow I have a meeting with the Middle Sex League superintendents to review the new MIA guidance on winter sports. And we will be collaborating to see exactly what we can propose as a district, as the Middle Sex League district, and as a collaborative group of superintendents in terms of what we feel we might be able to safely execute for a plan for winter athletics. And I say might because, you know, we need to always keep the context in mind of we're still in the middle of a pandemic and the transmission of the virus is really what kind of drives a lot of this, what drives a lot of our decision-making and our ability to continue schedules or to kind of cut schedules short. And so that's an important piece. I also want to let the community know that we got a call today, letting us know, we got a letter from the MSBA, letting us know that our enrollment documentation is complete for the high school, which is a major milestone in Module 1 in our eligibility phase. So that's complete and we are moving forward. And myself, Bob Shiroli, and Christine Bufagner will be joining the MSBA meeting, I believe right now in early December. And after that meeting, the plan is for us to move on to the feasibility study, which is really terrific news. So that's a milestone and it's one step forward in us kind of working toward getting a new high school. So really feel pleased about that and we've really chipped away. I also want to especially thank Bob Shiroli and Steve Mayo. Initially, when we got our enrollment numbers, they looked at a kind of a 10-year look back and a 10-year look forward to kind of predict what the numbers of the high school will be. Now that there's a control margin in there as well. And so, but based on that information, we thought that the numbers were low. And so Bob Shiroli worked collaboratively with members on the town side and he documented all of the new building that's happening in town and all of, as well as all of the proposed building that's happening in town. And was able to determine based on past developments, on average, for square footage of condo or apartment space in large developments, exactly how many students we were getting from each one of these spaces. And we used that data and resubmitted the information to the MSBA, which increased our enrollment to numbers that we are absolutely more comfortable with moving forward. But that was part of what was discussed today on our call, along with letting us know that we are in the chute. We are finishing the eligibility phase and we're moving into getting a project manager and working with architects around feasibility, which is again, a big milestone. And we have a lot of thanks to give for that. So we feel good about reporting that. And so that's what I'd like to report so far. And so additional news. And so just I'd like to give an update in regard to the high school scaling back their schedule. And so we sent out correspondence indicating why we needed to scale back at the high school. But I'd just like to provide a little bit of an explanation there, just to kind of inform people about why we needed to scale back, right? And so one of the things that we have maintained, that I have maintained, that our ability to stay in school safely is really predicated on our ability to contact trace and to support our local Board of Health and DPH to contact trace, to understand where students are becoming, who they come in contact with, to then be determined positive themselves, right? And our ability to contact trace is predicated on two things. One, the people, the ability of people to trust and to share information with the Board of Health and our school nurses. But the other, the other part for us to do this effectively is really to pay close attention to the rate of change. And the weekend before last, on the Friday morning when I reported with Steve Mayo and Ruth Clay from the Board of Health on Friday the 13th, we meet at 10:30 in the morning. And during that time, we had about a 45-minute window of this meeting, we had 12 student cases. And in about a 24-hour period, we had 14 new cases. Eight of those cases ended up being high school students. And so that dramatic change over such a short period of time kind of caused all of us to really take pause and to not only look at the contact tracing that was happening, but also the ripple effect of the number of students that needed to quarantine. We also, there were a number of students that we had to speak with to make sure that they knew they needed to quarantine. And there were a number of families that we needed to be in touch with as well. And so based on the dramatic rate of change in the district, but especially at the high school, the number of high school students, we decided it would be safest for us to scale back and to go remote while also having small groups of students coming into the building. And so, so that's what we've done for the past week, week plus. Today is day two of week two. But the rest of our schools stayed in session in their hybrid plans, right? And so right now, we've, if the cup is half-full and we're looking at, you know, what are positive takeaways? We've looked at the current data and after that dramatic increase, we have five new student cases and two new staff members that have tested positive. And so that, those numbers are more in keeping with kind of the increases that we've had in the weeks prior. It makes us feel more secure in our decision-making and it makes us feel hopeful that we will be able to open the high school in a hybrid plan on Monday, the 30th. That's our plan right now. And Amy McLeod will be working with faculty and staff and we'll be reaching out to the community, letting them know that that's exactly what our plan is, to come back in hybrid on Monday, October 30th. Now I need to preface that statement by saying, we will work very closely with the Board of Health over the Thanksgiving break. And we will continue to pay attention to the state database in regard to the number of positive cases in the state, in surrounding communities, as well as in Wakefield. And we will pay particular attention to the number of student cases that we have at the high school. And if, and if the numbers creep up again, we may need to scale back. But based on the information that we have at this current moment, we are kind of positively hopeful and our plan is to, in terms of information that is known and data that is known, for us to get our high school students back in school on Monday, the 30th. So that's, that's an important kind of data point that we wanted to share. And that's kind of where we're at with COVID-19 data in regard to the update and the high school schedule. I also want to let the community know that as a preventative measure, we're also working with WA leaders and principals to have plans in the event that we need to scale back either at the middle school, at the elementary schools, or at the preschool as well. So we have plans for all levels for us to do that, right? And so we are not anticipating that we will need to scale back at those levels, but we are prepared to do so in the event that we need to, right? Those are often questions that we get in our standing Zoom meetings, both with faculty, staff, and parents on Tuesday and Thursday afternoon. So that's all that I have to report. I don't know if anyone has any information, excuse me, not information, if anyone has any questions based on the information that I've shared so far. Suzie?
Doug, can you give us just a total rundown of kind of where we are on numbers now? Because I've, I've kind of lost count. So since the email that came out on the Sunday, we had had 14 new cases. And then you just said we have five students and two staff.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what we've seen since the Sunday, the 16th.
Correct, correct. So we have three new students at Galvin. We have one student at Dolbear and we have two at the high school, right? And so that will bring our numbers, I believe, to 31. And one of those cases, I think, has yet to hit the Maven database. So it might be, might be at 30 and tomorrow it will go up to 31. Sometimes parents get information ahead of the state database and kind of they let us know, which has really been terrific. Suzie, is that helpful?
Yeah, that is very helpful. So, and then I had a follow-up question. I had seen in the news that there had been a headline about schools having testing and that Wakefield was listed as one of the schools that's a part of the program. Is that something that you could talk about?
It's absolutely something that I can talk about. And so we have worked collaboratively with the Board of Health, with our town leaders, and with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And we, in a number of districts, have been selected to participate in the Binax antigen testing. And so one of the things that we are kind of actively working on right now is we're really trying to figure out if, if this test helps us and makes us better, if it makes us more efficient, if it helps us determine positive cases more effectively. And, and right now, we're still in kind of the information collection phase. Because this is an antigen test, if you test positive, you are presumed positive, but you are then referred to get a PCR test, right? So, so this is not kind of the gold standard PCR test that everyone is going to get right now. This is kind of a mid-level test that has some degree of kind of inconclusive results, where there are often false positives and also false negatives. And so one of the things that we're working with our nurses is just kind of working through the protocols that we're using. For example, if a student is symptomatic at school, they would be quarantined and they would be dismissed to a parent. And they would be referred to testing. And the testing that we would refer them to is a PCR test. If they were in school and they were symptomatic and they took an antigen test and that antigen test came out positive, we would refer them to, they would be dismissed and they would be referred for a PCR test. If they tested negative and were symptomatic, they would be sent home and probably still referred for a PCR test. So one of the things that we're trying to work through is just really this question of, is this added step, does this added step make us better? Does it make us more effective and more efficient? And, and you know, really, we're on the fence with this, but we're really trying to find and work, again, collaboratively, not only with, with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, but also Mass DPH and other districts that are also working in the space. And so we, like a number of districts, have yet to fully commit to this program because again, we are still, we have more questions than answers right now.
And Doug, just one last final, like, follow-up to that. Does that, is that testing that would be used for students and staff? Or is it for the community? Like, what, is it geared at a particular universe of people?
So the audience that it's geared toward are students and staff that are symptomatic. So this would not be a precautionary test, which is, which is really, I think, the direction that we're going in, right? Just like our college students that are coming home, the majority of them are part of active testing programs where they participate in PCR testing one or two or three times a week, right? And so that's kind of, I believe, the direction that we're going. And as the tests become more available, I think it's going to become part of our practice in the future. The question really is when? Right? And so in parallel to that, there's also vaccine trials that are happening in a number of areas as well. So it's kind of a race right now.
All right, thank you Doug. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Other questions? Colleen, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry.
No, you answered it with your symptomatic. I was wondering if we were only testing symptomatic students and staff or all students and staff? But you answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg?
Yeah, thanks Doug. I just, let's, let's say a question and a comment. I just wanted to say thanks for the clarity with which you've, you know, kept us all informed. You know, for the public to know that you and Amy briefed the school committee last week, you know, as you were working on this decision. And I know, I can't speak for all of us, but I know for me and I know for many of my colleagues, our goal is to keep students in, in school as much as safely possible. And we're all working toward that goal. And I think we're asking the community to, to kind of see two, in a way, paradoxical trends. One is the rising caseload in the community as it's happening, you know, across the Commonwealth and across the country. But at the same time, more and more evidence that the spread is not happening in the schools. But we're trying to balance those things. And the communication, the letter that you and Steve Mayo sent out to the community and also Amy's comments tonight, recognizing the difficult conditions that parents and families are operating under is really, really important, really well-taken. And so I just want to, you know, reassure the community that, that decisions being made by this administration and the school committee are being made in the best interest of kids and with the best data available. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So my only two final comments in regard to COVID are, number one, I want to report very clearly to the community that as the number of positive cases get higher and higher by the day across the state, there's also kind of a correlation to what we're seeing in Wakefield. And so the number of students that are needing to quarantine and the number of adults that are needing to quarantine continue to increase, right? And so, and as that happens, you know, it's going to increase both the number of students that are going to need to be out of school. And, and so, and we, the cases that we have in quarantine currently, okay, are, they come one of two ways. One, they're recommended by our Board of Health nurse Karen Cronin and the administrator Ruth Clay. Or they come because parents feel like their child may have had an exposure through a family contact or through a gathering or through a sport that their, their son or daughter plays. And they're choosing as a preventative measure to keep their son or daughter out of school and to get them tested. And so we, we can't kind of thank you enough, parents and community members. We can't thank you enough for being proactive, right? And really being thoughtful, right? And so we feel like that little gesture not only helps keep your family safe, but really helps keep everyone safe, right? It goes back to, I think, Greg's words, which is, you know, we all have a role in keeping each, not only ourselves, but each other safe. So we want to thank you for that. And so that's, that's a very important piece. And so, and in the coming weeks, you know, in addition to positive cases, we're going to report just kind of generally the number of people that are, that are quarantining, just to kind of keep a, just keep an eye on this number because it's an important piece. And we are also keenly aware of students returning from college and universities. You know, we're trying to be positive about that. But we're also trying to communicate and be thoughtful in regard to our supporting the community and communicating clearly around everyone's need to really be vigilant around social gatherings and get-togethers over the Thanksgiving holiday. And so we know that, you know, mask-wearing and being socially distant and limiting sizes of gatherings, we know these things work. And they help, you know, keep our community open and they help keep our schools open. So, and we think people have been really effective in that space. We also know that several parents have reached out with questions around travel. You know, if they travel, will they need to quarantine? And, and the answer to that question is, we need to follow everyone. Faculty, staff, and families, right? Need to follow the governor's guidance on travel. If you come back from being out of state and you're required to have a test before you come, come back in or before your children start school, we need to support you to do that and we will. And overwhelmingly, we trust and we think people are really making good decisions. And if we can help with that, or you have questions about it, we would urge you to contact either your school nurse, your principal, or you can certainly contact myself or Cara Morrow, our Assistant Superintendent at Central Office. So thank you very much. And it's perfect timing. I can kind of turn it over to Cara. And, and so she is going to talk about curriculum work that we're doing.
Sure. Thanks Doug. So I'll be brief in my introduction because the presentation tonight has a lot of information for everyone. I just wanted to start to set up that tonight you'll be hearing about our math curriculum review process. And that is part of this curriculum review cycle that Wakefield has established. And I know we provided the history and the documents for you to review before tonight. I just wanted to just talk about the fact that this process has been planned out since before the closure last spring. It was something that we had been preparing for in the area of math. At this stage, we're really thinking about where are we right now with our, our math curriculum? Is what we set out to do happening? Are students learning our expectations where we want them to be? So it's a really important process that will happen in each of our content areas. And the leaders of this work, we have a math curriculum review team, which we're fortunate enough to have some members here to represent the larger group, but you'll hear about who has been involved. But I'd like to start with our curriculum coordinators, Lindsay Moska, who is our 5 through 12 math curriculum coordinator, and Valerie Drynan, who is our elementary STEM curriculum coordinator. Val and Lindsay have just been instrumental in this process, really taking what Wakefield started for a process and refining it and really setting up what I think is a really nice model that we'll be able to carry out in other departments. Val and Lindsay are part of a larger curriculum coordinator group we are fortunate to have within the district. We have Margaret Messier is our ELA curriculum coordinator, 5 through 12. Jennifer Thomas is science, 5 through 12. We have Jason Pavey, social studies, 5 through 12. And Erin Manzi, who is our world languages curriculum coordinator. So it's a really great group that works really well together. And Val and Lindsay have just done a nice job working throughout this process and really looking at the K to 12 trajectory, which, which I love. And also tonight, we have Katie Dolan from the Doyle School here as our preschool representative. We have Claire Boyle from the Woodville School as our elementary rep. And we have Sharon Carney from the high school. And Sharon is also our department coordinator, our math department coordinator at the high school as well. So we're lucky to have them here to represent the larger group. And I won't go on and on. I'm just really proud of this group. I think it's just a phenomenal group and the work they're doing is, is really top-notch. And we wanted- And we wanted to have them here tonight just to fill in the school committee and the public on the process. It's not finished yet, but we thought we would at least get you in the know in terms of what's already happened so far since the spring, summer, and fall, and where we're headed and what we're hoping for outcomes. So they're gonna, I'm gonna toss it over to Lindsay and Val and they'll go through their presentation.
Great, thank you Cara so much for the very generous and kind introductions. Is the slides being presented or? I mean, I can share my screen too.
Yeah, oh, there we go, Lindsay.
Great. So first of all, we just really wanted to thank you guys for inviting us to come and speak about this ongoing curriculum review. You know, no pun intended, we know everyone has a full plate this week of Thanksgiving. And, you know, between, you know, kind of planning for a 2020 Thanksgiving and also dealing with a pandemic and all the major decisions that this group and this administration has to deal with. We appreciate you coming along with us to talk about the future of math education. We appreciate whenever we get a chance to work on this curriculum review, taking a break from pandemic education and thinking about what we hope for the future. So thank you for having us. You go the next slide. So tonight, we really just want to take a chance to introduce the team here tonight. And they're going to be helping us present a little bit and go over just progress and next steps for this curriculum review. Like Cara said, this, we've been planning and kind of working on this really since the winter last year. It's been, you know, interesting and very educational, changing the plan quite a few times to try to make it work for the situation that we have, you know. And we're just so excited that we have so many committed people on our team. And then when we ended up shifting from the spring to the fall this year, and then also having to make it a completely virtual process, you know, we really hung on to the entire team that had signed up back in January before a pandemic, which really just speaks to the enthusiasm in the great team that we have going. So next slide.
Hi, so I actually was going to introduce the team members, but Cara already did that for us. So that'll just move us aside. So thank you, Cara. And as Lindsay alluded to here, and Cara also, actually, Wakefield already had an established curriculum review process. So Lindsay, it's in five phases. And Lindsay and I had started meeting with Cara back in January to really outline our action steps for this process. And as we've also mentioned, we had to make a couple of different iterations of that plan with the changes in March that happened. So our, you know, our original work was supposed to start in the spring with our book study, which we did delay till this fall and have done virtually. So what we wanted to really point out on this slide here was that within the five phases, you'll notice some overlap. And we thought that was an important piece of information to share because we thought it was important to know that we're using the data that we've collected and reviewed our historical achievement data that we reviewed in phase five to inform our action steps for phase one, which is our evaluation of, you know, what are our current practices? What are, are they aligned with the current research-based practices in math education? And so currently, we're in that overlap of phase five and one, as you can see on the timeline here on this slide. And you'll see going forward, we have a few other overlaps coming as we look at materials and determine what are the appropriate materials that we can use to align with our updated practices and then review implementation. So we can move to the next slide now, actually. And this slide here is a visual that we borrowed from a group that we've become part of now. So the Department of Education has started a new cohort of what they call an evaluation and selection network, which is a group of districts that are all participating in curriculum reviews within their individual districts. So we applied to be part of this network, knowing that it would provide us some opportunity to collaborate with other districts who are undergoing curriculum review and share best practices. And then within this network, we have monthly meetings with the team to support us through each phase of the process. And what we were most excited about was when we got to this meeting, we realized we're actually ahead here in Wakefield. So we were very excited about that. We already had our team established and a process in place. So really, this network is helping support us through each phase of the process. And this visual here, you know, kind of gives a picture of what each phase of the process involves, the five different components that we're looking at through each phase. And.
Great, so I think to really understand the, one of the reasons and the purpose of having a curriculum review cycle at this point in time for mathematics. And, you know, not only are we, are we at that point in sort of the Wakefield's plan for a continuous curriculum review cycle, but there's been some major changes in the math education over the last 30 or so years. And so I won't bore you with the nitty gritty details, but give you a really big overview. So as early as the, as the 90s, the National Council of Teachers in Mathematics, which is NCTM, first started establishing common standards that should be taught in each grade level, you know, with a lot of work from the National Science Foundation, all of the big brains in math education. And back then was really one of the first times that it was starting to be standardizing what was taught in each grade. You know, before there was kind of a Wild West across different classrooms and schools and states. So that was the first time a national set of standards really started to be developed about what was appropriate to each grade level. And then over the years, in the year 2000, NCTM produced principles and standards. It was also the first year that Massachusetts adopted curriculum standards for mathematics. In 2011, Common Core was written and really started to revise and continue to focus on the idea of understanding and conceptual understanding in mathematics, as well as eight mathematical teaching practices, which is ways of thinking about math that produce transferable skills across content areas. Getting into later in the 2000s, there's been a much bigger focus on equity and access for students so that all students have the right and deserve access to high-level mathematics, teaching and learning. And then in 2017 was the last revisions to the Massachusetts standards. Primarily, the revisions were in elementary school, really still cleaning up and in calling some of the standards so that there was an opportunity for deeper knowledge. Next slide. So this is all important for Wakefield's process because for some folks, I mean, I'm new here. I've only been in Wakefield for two years, but I've been in the math education business for a little while. But in Wakefield, it might seem like, wow, like, didn't we just do this? You know, didn't we just get this new program? And the timing when Wakefield worked through that process last is actually very important. So prior to 2014, Wakefield had a variety of different curriculum materials at different schools, grades, and classes. And they were not necessarily aligned to the Common Core curriculum standards that Massachusetts implemented in 2013. So in 2014, Wakefield piloted the Envision Mathematics Program, K to six, and purchased a six-year contract starting the following year. The year after that, when the grade seven and eight materials became available, they also purchased, the district purchased those materials in a six-year contract and also geometry at the high school. What's important to know is that typically, major curriculum development from any publisher or writer takes about five or more years of writing and testing. In mid-development cycle, many publishers had to pivot and adjust what they were doing when Common Core was adopted because the standards were significantly different with a different focus on ways of learning. And so because of that, a lot of materials that were released in the early years after Common Core was written have mapped to the standards, but were not developed from them. So they kind of backed into those standards. And while they cover them, the pedagogy and the intent is not necessarily built into the way the curriculum was designed. Next slide, please. And so, you know, one of the major shifts in these standards from Common Core through the 2017 revisions is a focus on these eight mathematical practices. And these are practices that are considered a requirement and a focus for K through 12 in mathematics. And really, these are the transferable skills that we want students to engage in mathematics and be thinking about how does mathematics help you succeed in other areas of your life as a problem solver? And that's really the essence of the math practices. So those shifts mean that there's less topics, that there's coherence, linking, and spiraling topics across different grade levels. And also rigor does not just mean speed and calculation. In fact, it means much more than that. It's application fluency and conceptual understanding for deeper learning.
So now that you've heard a little bit about how and why, sorry, how and what shifted in the standards, we want to talk about the why it shifted. So as you can see here, this chart is from 1970, the most valued skills in the workplace. And you can see here, we've underlined the computational skills sit up at number two. Well, problem solving sits at number 12. And if you can go to the next slide, please. So this is the same list for 1999. And you can see that the two have completely flip flopped there. So problem solving moved up as a more desirable skill on the list and computation moved its way down on the list. And next slide, please. And we felt like 1999 was not current enough for us. So we dug up another list from 2020. And as you can see, you know, speed and calculation no longer make the list of valued skills in the workplace, rather skills such as collaboration, creativity, adaptability. And the reason we thought this was really important to share is because when our students in Wakefield graduate, we want them to be prepared for success in future jobs that require a different skill set, a much different skill set from when we graduated. So next slide, please. So in order to start off our work with the curriculum review team, we thought it was important to frame our work in research. So we chose to do a book study using Joe Bowler's book, Mathematical Mindsets. And we started with this because we thought it was important to ground our work in professional learning. So that as a team, we had a research-based, you know, research-based information that we needed to move forward in our process. And through doing this book study, we collectively determined themes that are going to help guide our work in this process. Next slide, please. So this quote here was pulled directly from Bowler's book that we used for the book study because it succinctly summarizes the science and the brain research that proves that everyone has the ability to learn math. So we all came into this book study with our own individual beliefs about math teaching and learning. And, you know, through research and evidence and experience and discussion, we've come up with a set of collective values that will help guide our district decision-making. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Claire from our team, who's going to start sharing out some of these themes that we established from our book study.
All right, thank you, Val. If you wouldn't mind just switching to the next slide, that would be great. All right, so in Joe Bowler's book, which I really enjoyed reading, there was a great emphasis on growth mindset and the importance of growth mindset for teachers and students and parents alike. And just thinking about it as the former side referred to as, no one's born with a math brain and just the importance of how your brain develops over time. In her book, Joe emphasizes the importance of instilling a growth mindset for all students from the very start. I'm talking about it openly in your class and giving kind of examples of what a growth mindset is versus fixed mindset. Fixed mindset being, you're smart, this is, you're really a great math thinker, which doesn't allow for much growth. The theme of growth mindset as a crucial part of math learning is weaved throughout the book. Students with a growth mindset have a greater brain activity than those with fixed mindset. Next slide, please. So in her book, she also talks about the process and the importance of the process for students to get to that answer, whereas we've all worked with students who are very interested in raising their hand for the answer. And she focuses on the emphasis of having students talk about their mathematical thinking and challenge each other. And we talked about how there's also kind of controversy with the tracking system in schools, especially on the middle school and high school level. And we kind of talked about the pros and cons and how tracking does kind of instill that more of a fixed mindset. You're in the honors program, meaning you are a math student. Whereas getting rid of tracking might incorporate kind of different students on different levels, working with each other and bringing out the best in each other's math thinking. Next slide, please. And my favorite here, the productive struggle and the importance of making mistakes. I feel like we all grew up hearing, you know, you can learn from your mistakes, usually kind of based on like a judgment level or something you're doing outside of school. But the importance of talking about mistakes as important learning points in school and honoring those mistakes and highlighting those mistakes for students and having conversations about those mistakes, I think will continue to instill that collaborative approach, working with different students in your classroom and kind of hearing what everyone's gone through and highlighting a mistake as not being a bad thing, but actually a good thing and an opportunity for brain development and growth.
Hi, everybody, I'm Sharon and I'm the department coordinator at the high school. And I'm here to talk to you about rich tasks and collaboration. These tasks are the vehicle to foster the growth mindset, to have all students participate in math and another to foster the productive struggle. Rich tasks evoke different ways of thinking and inspires ownership of mathematical concepts. It gets students excited to share their ideas. It provides an environment for students to come up with the ideas and just not reproduce methods or algorithms. The role of the teacher is to provide these and facilitate discussion and encourage productive struggle that Claire just talked about. It also has a low floor, high ceiling, and it can act, all students can access these rich tasks. And the high-quality task foster engagement, curiosity, connection-making, challenge, creativity, and collaboration. Next slide, please. I really liked the statement at the end, mathematics doesn't equal calculation. We're trying to get away from rote algorithms, you know, math facts, you know, speed tests. What we really want is conceptual understanding. We want to have, you know, these tasks require reasoning as opposed to calculations. Math isn't just about getting the answer. We want to foster problem solving. So by focusing on conceptual understanding, rather than procedural fluency, students are able to think more deeply and become confident problem solvers. And they've also become more flexible. Visual models, explanation, and multiple strategies are needed to foster this conceptual understanding.
All right, hi, everybody. I'm Katie Dolan. I teach integrated preschool at the Doyle. And I'm going to be talking a little bit about the process that we went through to develop a vision statement for this project. So the first thing is that we're going to show you this really cool word bubble that we made. This is actually like one of my favorite parts of what we've done so far, I have to say honestly. So I was really glad that I got to talk about this one. So basically, what happened was after we went through the book study that was mentioned earlier, the ticket, and this is kind of taking everyone's top words that they used in the exit ticket and combining them into a really cool visual. So you kind of notice that the key words that you really kind of stand out to you are all students, growth mindset, problem solving, productive struggle. And again, that problem solving, that's a key job skill that we talked about kind of in that earlier explanation, that that's something that people are going to be looking for in the workplace as our students graduate and move on to their next phase of their lives. We want to promote high expectations with our students by instilling all of these values into them and, you know, not getting stuck because they have all of these awesome skills that they kind of have in their pocket. So once we made this word bubble, this then kind of translated into our vision statement. So if you can switch to the next slide. Okay, so I'm going to read the vision statement just to get us started and then I'll talk about it a little bit. So every student in the Wakefield Public Schools has an equitable experience with high-quality mathematics, teaching, and curriculum. They graduate as confident problem solvers, ready to make an impact on their world. Educators engage students of every background and ability with tasks that inspire curiosity. Our students thrive in classrooms where reasoning, collaboration, productive struggle, and problem solving are expected. Educators believe that all students can achieve at the highest levels of math. We partner with families and the community and hold ourselves accountable for the success of every student. So this is what we've come up with so far as our math vision statement. And the way that we came up with this is that we worked in groups. So the groups combined members of our math curriculum review team that had gone through the book study process and administrators from around the district. And so then we were broken down into small groups. So each group had some teachers, had one or two administrators, and it was really a nice way to kind of see everybody's thoughts and feelings on what our vision statement should include. We all wrote kind of drafts or different phrases and things that we wanted to make sure were included in the vision statement, keeping in mind all those things that were in that word bubble. And then Lindsay and Val kind of combined those and put them into this cohesive statement that you're looking at right now. So this is kind of like our product at this stage of the game. This is definitely an aspirational statement. This is what we're working towards and what we want to see in our classrooms. Right down from the little ones. right down from the little ones all the way up to our oldest students. So, this is something that's going to be at every level, and that will be, look different at each stage, but it's the overarching theme kind of. And this is going to be kind of our backbone for the decisions that we'll make going forward as far as curriculum and what we're going to decide. So, as we evaluate different materials, we can go back to this statement and think, are they meeting our needs based on what we were hoping for? So, I think all I have.
I had a question, if I could. I'm not sure who for. So, the timeline, I know it'll continually evolve, but to kind of get you to the first milestone, how long do you think it will take?
I'm actually very glad you asked. I'm going to talk about just a survey that we're going to be sending out. Our next one is next steps. And so, I think if I don't cover that, please ask it for more clarity afterwards. We only have two slides left. So, now that we have this, this vision statement, you know, the team is really working hard to, you know, get to a place where we are making recommendations, you know, in terms of what does the team think are best next steps for mathematics, teaching, and learning in Wakefield Public Schools. And in one of those steps is a family, student, and teacher survey. Right now, we're actually gathering feedback from teachers, and those surveys are due on Tuesday at ADM to give Val an eye about a day and a half or so to process and get it ready for a December 3rd needs assessment meeting. And so, sometime after Thanksgiving, families and students will also be surveyed and will also be establishing some family and student focus groups. The student focus groups will be for our younger scholars that may not be able to engage in a productive way with a Google Form survey. And then also an opportunity for families to engage with members of the curriculum review team and kind of share their aspirations and feelings about the current program and your children's experience with math. And so, those are things are sort of in the works. You know, and focus groups are likely going to be after the new year because not many folks have the capacity to engage in that in December. So, next slide, please. And so, as Mr. Boudreau had asked, you know, we have quite a few next steps outlined. I think that Valerie and I have one of the most detailed-looking master schedules where all of our notes kind of live, and we've distilled it down to a few bullet points for this year. But certainly, we're working on a needs assessment. And then, over the wintertime, our team is going to be looking at the marketplace and what's available in curriculum resources from K to 12, you know, using lens of our vision statement, but also, you know, rubrics that kind of really outline what is our value system, what are high-quality curriculum materials, what's aligned to standards. And they're going to first learn how to do that evaluation, learn the rubric, and then actually have sort of some assignments to look at materials and start to make the shortlist of what is appealing to us, while also comparing it to what we currently do in the, in the program that we're currently using in each grade level. And so, then, you know, as you can see, we're kind of be moving through, looking at different units and possibly thinking about pilots if it is needed, but also plan and prep for professional development needs. You know, we've, we've been hearing loud and clear from teachers that we work with and teachers on the team and also just past experience, you know, with, with new curriculum, that ongoing and continuous professional development is important. And we know that our team is, is really excited about the idea of that professional development being focused on what we're going to do with materials, not necessarily where to click or what page to turn to in the materials. And so, we understand that we're really trying to make a pedagogy shift really based on a lot of the values that we've outlined in this, this presentation. And so, by the, the end of the springtime, what we're hoping to be producing is recommendations for a program or pilots, you know, at each grade level. You know, what we're looking at right now, there's a little bit more of a need K to six. We have a contract expiring for our current resources. And so, that plan is a little bit more immediate and we'll be thinking about recommendations for rollout in other grades. It's, it's not possible to do a K-12 rollout of anything. It would be ineffective. And so, you know, we're really trying to be thoughtful about what choices and what recommendations that the team makes. So, you know, at this time, I would love to flip back to the slide of the, the word cloud. And so, that way, if anybody has any questions, we have this nice inspirational word cloud on there as, as a backdrop. But certainly, if anybody has questions, we would love to, to answer them.
Well, I just want to thank you all so much for what a great visual presentation that was. I like the resources that you are all using and, you know, I think they're really great. And to ensure student success in math, it's really important. I will certainly be on the lookout for the surveys and keep us posted on those results. I think they'd be very interesting. So, thank you again. Questions?
Will your monitoring tool to gauge how, how you're doing enrolling this out be part of the spring 2021 deliverable as well?
Yeah, I think at that point, what we're going to be doing is, so we, we are currently in planning stages to make sure that the rubrics we're using to evaluate curriculum ideas and looking at the whole marketplace and kind of getting through a funnel are really lined up with the, the value system that has been established by the team this fall. And then, as we get into, you know, implementation and teachers kind of testing out different units, you know, we'll continue to use that same value system and kind of looking at, you know, how it goes in student outcomes. You know, it's, it's, it's interesting kind of year between last year and this year. We don't have a lot of standardized data, you know, because we don't have MCAS and kind of other things to compare it to. So, you know, I think that we're really going to be, you know, asking teachers to use formative assessment within those tools and, you know, have some monitoring along the way to make sure that whatever teachers pick is going to, you know, improve outcomes for sure. And I think that once we get into some that might be a little bit longer, like if it's the 21, 22 school year, you know, we'll have a similar plan for both professional development and, and monitoring built into recommendations.
Excellent. Thank you. Very nice.
Any other questions? Yep, Greg.
Thanks, Amy. Yeah, I just want to echo Amy's thanks. A really, really informative presentation. I was thinking about, you know, the larger body of work that you're doing together and tying it back to our earlier conversations about the COVID and, and the decisions we're making as a community. And I just remember being, being a kid and sitting in algebra or geometry class, and I was among the kids who would roll his eyes and say, why do I have to learn this stuff, right? And, you know, as you get older, you realize that mathematics is literally everywhere. And in the current context, we have, you know, decision-makers at every level of society looking at data, mathematical data, being asked to analyze mathematical information and make decisions that are literally life and death decisions. And about, you know, people's health, their well-being, the future of our economy. So, to me, like, that really puts in context the whole approach to mathematical reasoning, decision-making, decision-making, problem solving that you're emphasizing in this curriculum. So, I, I just really wanted to emphasize how important that all is. And I appreciate the, the context around the education reform and the role, and the role of mathematic, mathematic curriculum and that. One question I had was, you know, we often in, in talking about education get presented with this tension, whether it's real or imagined, between equity and excellence. And obviously, the notion of the growth mindset, that everybody starts at a certain point and with a growth mindset has the capacity to get to achieve excellence at whatever level they're capable of. How are we, outside of the traditional, you know, standardized tests and other, other places, how are we measuring how successful our students are at adopting growth, that growth mindset? Maybe any of you could answer that, please.
Sure. I mean, I think it's a, it's a fantastic question. And I think one of the, the most important parts of thinking about equitable instruction and mathematics and access to those kinds of things is that, you know, students are asked questions that their, that their voice matters and that their curiosity is impactful and is necessary for a class to move forward. And so, a lot of equitable instruction practices really revolve around students being given the opportunity to see themselves as doers as mathematics and have a positive identity about math. And that's really what grows their capacity as a, as a mathematician moving forward, which, you know, obviously ties into growth mindset as well. And so, I think that as we move through this curriculum review and thinking about tracking that, you know, what our hopes would be is that having a curriculum that really emphasizes equitable instruction practices and curriculum and tasks that support those practices and allow teachers to do that is what we really want to see is closures in achievement gaps with some of our subgroups, like students with disabilities, our English learners, and our non-white students. Because right now, this is historical problem across the entire country, in Massachusetts, in Wakefield. And when we implement a curriculum that the team in the district really feels is equitable, over time, that's what we would want to see, is that all students are able to achieve at a higher level.
And I think I just wanted to add on to what Lindsay's saying there, just with the rich task piece that Sharon was talking about. It's, it's more about providing access to all students for, to participate with those, engage in those rich tasks by providing them tasks that have entry points for everybody, right? So, so it's not like lowering the bar for somebody that might be struggling a little more with math. It's more of giving them an entry point within those tasks to be able to get access to that same level of task.
Yeah. I would also say that the same is true for, for students who are very high achieving, is that when they have access to problems that are rich in that way, it's not about where they come in, it's about how far they can go in that problem. And right now, I think a lot of our teachers could speak to, it's very time-consuming and challenging for them to find those kinds of tasks for students engaged with because the curriculum that they're using wasn't built that way. And it wasn't built on the same research in that value system. And so, it's, it takes a lot of work to find problems that really reach a lot. But the equitable practices we're talking about are, are for students who struggle and have traditionally for students who have been disinterested in math and students who are interested and are high flyers. And, you know, equitable instruction really meets the needs of all those students.
Great. Thank you. That's, that's, that's excellent. Thank you. Just one quick follow-up, and I think this is more for Doug and/or Cara. And I should know the answer to this question, so I apologize. But the timeline going forward for this curriculum, what is the specific role of the school committee? At what point do we actually make a decision on this? If I remember correctly, we approved the math curriculum. Was it when 2017, 2018? At some point, we'll approve a new round, a new, new point in the cycle. Is that right?
We'll, we'll make a final proposal in the spring, right? And so, you know, Lindsay and Val are working very closely with teachers and very thoughtfully. You know, and one of the big determinants about our ability to buy new curriculum and more importantly, to pilot new and from new curricula is really what plan we're in, right? And so, we, we don't want to, you know, rush to make a decision in the curriculum review cycle because, you know, but we need to do it more thoughtfully. And I think one of the strengths of this team, you know, I know it's not missed on anyone. We have teachers here from pre-K through high school, right? And, you know, Val and Lindsay are, you know, have been really remarkable in this space and really working very closely and bringing the teachers into this process. So, so the quick answer, Greg, is springtime, we will make a recommendation if we're able to pilot and work through and really assess materials that we think can be effective with kids.
Great. Thank you.
One other question. I think early on, you talked about the fact when you were working with the Department of Education, you were perhaps pleasantly surprised that Wakefield was ahead of the game in some ways. So, I'm sort of curious, where are we on that evolution? Are we way ahead of everybody else? Are there a lot of people with us? What are you seeing?
I would say that it was kind of in regards to our curriculum review process and planning. And so, the network that we joined in is an evaluation and selection network where the Department of Education is supporting different content areas across the district in selection of high-quality instruction materials. And so, when we joined the team, we had already, you know, had a data research development PD plan, team established and things like that. So, we were a number of phases in to their curriculum review process when we joined in, which has really been beneficial because the team has been able to really take advantage of those resources, kind of have a double check that we're doing the right thing according to a really well-researched process, but also has given our team the ability to, to really dig deep into each of these parts that we're doing. And I feel like we're playing catch-up in terms of getting to a point where we can recommend high-quality materials, so.
That's great.
I just have a quick question. Do you have an idea of or a limit to the number of programs that you're going to review and pilot?
So, I can share. In past years, we've piloted two programs. And the teachers that have piloted the two programs have piloted both, right? So, it's a little bit of a wrinkle that, that might be a little different in this district compared to some other districts. And so, we asked teachers to work with materials from both programs. And so, they don't feel like they're winning or losing an argument, instead can participate more thoughtfully in the strengths of each program, right? We know that there's no perfect program, right? Whereas some programs, you know, offer, you know, problem solving that might be at one level, you know, and, and, you know, the technical aspects of it might not meet the needs of students. So, there's, there's a number of things to look at when selecting a program. But to answer your question, Darcy, we usually pilot two. We usually kind of, usually review between eight and 10 and then kind of pare that down to really think about how we can pilot two.
And in the DESI group that you're a part of, is there opportunity to share notes and, and help kind of narrow those down, you know, like, take it, right? And is DESI providing any, I know that they will never recommend programs, but is...
Well, these, I mean, these are great questions. Yeah. Like, one of the, the things that I think is so valuable, given the odd schedule and the challenges of pandemic schooling, is that this particular network in this program really gives us a lot of options to, to pare down and streamline a pilot process to really test out things, while also being able to compare notes from other, you know, districts that are kind of working in the same way. And so, that has actually been very helpful already in terms of narrowing the scope of what we're looking at. You know, one thing that is actually, you know, publicly available to see that the Department of Education is working through are some curriculum reviews of products called CURATE, C-U-R-A-T-E. Those reports are, are thorough. They haven't reviewed the entire marketplace yet. They've done a lot more ELA than they have math so far, but, but they're working through that. And even just clicking through some of those reports and looking at their reviews of some of the math products already, it's just very telling that all the value system that we have talked about is exactly the lens at which the Department of Education's curriculum office has been reviewing high-quality materials and has really been able to help us quickly eliminate large chunks of the vast marketplace from even consideration. And so, you know, I encourage folks, if you're interested in the nitty-gritty, to look at some of those reports that have been published from the Department of Education because it's, it's, they're, they're very thoughtful and very thorough.
And they do actually have a rubric that they use as they're going to, to evaluate that is available and that they've shared with our team as well. So, we're developing our rubric based off of that rubric when we're, we're looking at materials with our curriculum review team as well. So, that's been another support that's been helpful.
Well, thank you all so much. Any other questions from the group?
Amy, I've got just a comment. So, so I was around five, six, seven years ago when Wakefield kind of rolled out the original curriculum review plan. And I can remember at the time, being a parent, sitting at a school committee meeting, seeing that and thinking, thank you, we're finally kind of going to get kind of in line, right? And, and get all of, all the schools doing stuff consistently. And it was a big move for Wakefield. And I believe it was the year that we asked for the very large increase in budget in order to, this was one of the things that it was supporting. And it is awesome to see kind of how that process is really playing out. Last year, we got to see it for social studies. We're getting to see it with you guys for math. And I just want to say thanks for what you can tell is a tremendous amount of work that all of you folks have put into this. It's very thoughtful. It's impressive. I look forward to kind of seeing what, what you have to say in the spring. But it's, it's great to kind of see this process come to life and evolve over time, right? And you guys have really kind of taken it. And I think you put together a very, very strong presentation and, and really appreciate you taking the time to kind of walk us through it tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Suzie. Yep, Colleen.
Yes. Thank you so much for the presentation. It's laid out so well. And I really love how you tie in just, you know, it's really a cross-subject matter, really that these skills come in, and you can start to see that happening already, if you haven't already. But even as they, you know, as you see with older students that didn't have the same type of instruction and how it's changed and morphed and seeing our younger students just adapt to that. And what I'm... just adapt to that. And what I'm wondering and rolling this out, and so I'm just going back to your all students slide there. And you talked about tracking and you had mentioned that's really just how we think, and especially at the upper levels. You know, we track right now formally in seven to 12 and informally K to six. But I would say especially at the high school, it's it's defined very well, right? So I'm wondering what the guidance and education is really for parents and caregivers to understand how we shift from sort of a tracking method or mindset. We've already sort of shifted into a growth mindset, or we've we've hoped that we have, right? But I think math is especially, you know, it's a little bit different to be able to see that happen without like succinct divisions and how we group students. And so I just wondered if there's guidance around how we educate parents once we go through this curriculum review and we pilot programs. What is the support there so that we, parents can understand, you know, what your vision is?
Sure. I mean, I think that one of the biggest things to to really wrap our heads around is that none of these kinds of changes in outcomes happen happen quickly, right? You know, I think that some of the first steps are really going to be to having our students have this opportunity to engage it in a in a more equitable curriculum that more students can engage in rich tasks and really have the opportunity to, through the tasks and through the work, we find out what they know, not necessarily predict what they have access to ahead of time and only offer them that. And so that's really kind of some of the essence of equitable instruction. And I think that as teachers, you know, begin to engage in these rich tasks and kind of really working through the pedagogy and give students that experience, they are going to start to also see and parents will start to see and students will start to see different opportunities to engage at different levels and it's not necessarily one path. You know, I don't think that this curriculum review is going to result in recommendations to say, you know, by this date, we're going to be eliminating a tracking or anything. But I think it's really going to be through experience and through opportunity for students that will kind of start to see that more students than maybe we think now are able to engage in higher level mathematics and have that opportunity. And that the opportunity is a way for students to increase their access and their possible outcomes. And so in terms of education and helping people understand, I think it will be slow and gradual and really pointed so that folks understand what they're gaining, not what they're losing, when we shift how classes are structured, how students are grouped.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? Comments?
I just wanted to jump in with a comment, just to again, thank, thank the group. And I just appreciate so much how collaborative the whole process has been. I think, you know, Val and Lindsay and the math curriculum review team are leading the work. But they're also bringing in administrators into this work as well. They've kept Doug and I, we talked with them throughout as well. Just because it really has to be a group effort. I don't think our math teachers and math curriculum coordinators can carry the weight of, you know, math education in Wakefield on their own. They need all of us to be part of that work. And I just love how much time has been spent thinking about what we believe and what we want for our students and outcomes. And, you know, I think the resources are a huge part of that. But I love how much we're also talking about the professional development that needs to be linked to this work and how we need to keep, it's not just going to be, okay, we're done with the the math curriculum review cycle, let's move on. And I know that in talking with Lindsay and Val, that was important. And Doug as well to us, that it not just be a check in the box, that it be a really thorough process that had widespread representation across the district. And I think I think the team really has that. And like I said, I'm excited to see principals joining in on this work and and learning, you know, along with the group. I just think it's going to just make the process that much more rich and outcomes better for everyone. So just another, I just wanted to give a little bit more positive praise for the group and the and thanks. So thank you for that.
Great job, all of you. Really nice job.
Yes, Doug.
I'll be brief, but I need to to thank Lindsay and Val for your leadership on this, right? And and the fact that you've created a book study around this and really kind of investigated belief systems. And I especially want to thank the teachers that were able to come tonight, right? And so, you know, we have representation here, pre K through high school. This is done, again, very thoughtfully and in a way that I think really makes us so optimistic about our curriculum work moving forward. But and in terms of your question, Michael, around, you know, where do we stand compared to some other districts? I don't know if other districts have curriculum leadership quite this accomplished, right? And so that that's something that I think is really noteworthy here. And so, and I think Cara in regard to, you know, leading, leading curriculum, leading professional development, I think, you know, it's really, it's so fun to listen to, so fun to listen to, really great. But thank you. So and and best to you and your families over Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Yeah, I mean, we could praise you guys all night. You really did a phenomenal job. So thank you all so much for your hard work. And yes, we all wish you a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Next on the agenda, budget items, we have a couple of gifts. Christine?
Good evening. I'll be really brief. Yes, we have two gifts tonight. The first one was eight books that were donated to the four elementary schools from the Wakefield Human Rights Commission. The total value of the books is $115.84. And the second gift is for the stipend for the assistant coach for the boys soccer. That gift was $1,500.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of eight books from the Human Rights Commission, two to each of the four elementary schools for a total of $115.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? I've seen none. Roll call.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Bayer?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Dr. Burns?
Yes.
And Mr. Liakos?
Yes.
And then we have a second motion, move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $1,500 from the W H S Boys Soccer for a stipend for the assistant coach for the 2020 fall season.
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Bayer?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Dr. Burns?
Yes.
And Mr. Liakos?
Yes.
Great. Thank you all. Next on the agenda are subcommittee reports for finance and facilities. We continue to meet in our weekly meetings on Thursday morning. We met last week. We discussed the NRT bus contract. We also discussed our current fiscal year budget expenditures and also our goals and priorities for planning for fiscal year 21. And Bob Shirley also provided us with a facilities update. That is all I have for finance and facilities, labor and personnel. That would be Tom. Who else is in that subcommittee? Mike or?
Me and Susie. So we can probably throw something together if we're in the two of us. So it's primarily just educating Mike and Susie on all of all these matters that were somewhat naive too as well. So that's that'll take about seven or eight years probably. But so Doug and Tom have been very patient with us. Just, you know, trying to get us up to speed with some of these things, some of the stuff that we talked about earlier tonight as well. So very appreciative of that. Susie, I'm not sure what you have thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, I think where we haven't been discussing anything kind of significant that needs to be brought to the committee at the moment, but there's ongoing conversations about kind of the different phases and the schedules and and just the discussions that need to be happening with teachers at each of the individual phases that were where that we may or may not be in depending on COVID. That's really been the the crux of the meetings. And we do meet weekly. We have met this morning and then we met last week also.
Okay, thank you so much. Policy and communications?
So we haven't met since our last meeting, the last improvements. We had a little bit of a conflict, I guess, with student services. So we're going to be rescheduling our meeting, hopefully for sometime next week, I'm hoping. So still working that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. And student services, Darcy?
Yes, we we haven't met since our last school committee meeting, but we have a meeting scheduled. Sorry, Colleen. For next Wednesday morning, where we will be reviewing the results, the data collected from the teacher and family surveys, and then talking about next steps with the data.
Great. Thank you. Next on the agenda, future dates and agenda items, our next virtual school committee meeting will be Tuesday, December 8 at 7:30. School committee comments. Greg, since you're first on my Zoom box, you can go first.
No real additional comments. Just wanted to reemphasize how much I appreciate the efforts of the administration and Juanyi in in keeping the community informed about the decision making at this really difficult time for a lot of, a lot of parents and a lot of families. That's it. And other than that, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thanks, Greg. Colleen?
Yes, also just happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I hope you have a nice couple of days off and just reiterate, you know, what everyone's talked about before and practicing safe, responsible, loving gatherings so that we can all continue on the the path that we're on, keep our kids in school as much as possible.
Thank you, Colleen. Darcy?
Yes, I'd like to say one, the seamless transition from hybrid to a full remote schedule, I thought was great. And to be honest, I think in this full remote, students are interacting with teachers quite a bit. And so I think that was outstanding and done so quickly. And I would also like to second what Colleen said, you know, that it's super important that we stay diligent and and follow the protocols that are recommended by the CDC so that we can get our kids back in school because this is is not being spread in schools, right? This is a result of what's happening outside school. So I know I've made a conscious effort to, you know, really rein things in so that we can get kids back in school. With that, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Darcy.
Yeah, somewhat piggybacking on Darcy, you know, some people perceive this as going backwards the last week or so. And I don't really see it that way. I think everything, every step we take going forwards or backwards is a learning experience for us and we'll learn more from this as well. But I think one of the things that really impressed me a lot is because the communication with the community has been so exhaustive and thorough. I think that really contributed to a lot less angst within the community and hopefully less phone calls to Cara and Doug complaining about what we were doing as well. So I think you've laid a great foundation, you know, that started before September even showed its ugly head to us. So kudos to you and to others. You've really done a wonderful job. And it did go incredibly smoothly. Probably wasn't as smooth for you, but at least for the rest of us, it seemed like it went very smoothly. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Susie?
So during our comments last meeting, I made the mistake of congratulating us all on what a great job we were doing and how well we had done at keeping kids in school. And said, I hope I didn't jinx us. And a couple of days later, there we were, you know, making the decision about high school. So I promise not to do that ever again. I will just keep my mouth shut. But I do want to say that I have heard tremendously positive feedback from high school parents about how well the transition went, the move that students are seeing teachers and, you know, synchronously more. I know that parents in general have been really happy with kind of the change and how it went. I'm also happy, though, to hear that the kids, you know, God willing, will be back in school on Monday, because I think we continue to believe that it's important for students to be in school with their friends socially, because they're not going to, you know, they probably shouldn't be seeing them outside of school. And and to continue to build relationships with teachers, which was our whole goal in the first place, was getting kids into the classroom so that they could build relationships that would kind of tide them over for when we have to go remote. So I'm really thrilled to hear that there's a that the plan right now is that kids will be back in school. But I also think it's good to know that parents were really pleased and satisfied with what how things worked going fully remote as well. So I think it's a win win situation, no matter what has to happen on the Monday after Thanksgiving. And like everyone else said, let's all make good choices over the next few days and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Susie. Yeah, I just echo what everyone said. I would like to just to sort of reiterate, you know, I hope everyone stays well and stays safe and enjoys Thanksgiving with their family. And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
We do. Move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of November 24, 2020.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Eagerness to adjourn.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Bayer?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Dr. Burns?
Yes.
And Mr. Liakos?
Yes.
Thank you all so much. Thank you for watching our meeting. That concludes the meeting for this evening. Good night. Thank you. Be well.
Bye, everybody.